For our invocation led by Dr. Rudolph Overstreet at Benisa Benisa Church and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning. Our gracious Father, we first thank you for this day. And Lord, we ask you to give our city leader wisdom. And not only that, Lord, we pray for encouragement in their lives and for this entire city. Because, Lord, we need your influence in all of our lives. Be with us in this meeting today. That we will be the representative that you have called us all to be. Bless us and keep us which only you can do. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic folk which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we would sit down, I'd ask that we would observe a moment of silence in memory of former council president Charles Chapman, represented District Four on the first iteration of our city government, and served as council president during both terms in which he was elected. He passed on last week, and we certainly want to remember him and his legacy and most importantly, his family at these very trying times. So we could have a moment of silence for Councilman Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Smalls. Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Certainly nice to see such a live and active crowd here at this meeting today. The rules of council are as follows. We first ask that you turn off or silence all of your electronic devices upon entering the meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must clearly state for the record his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 P.M. We ask that all of your commentary be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Anyone that hadn't been able to follow those instructions won't be allowed an opportunity to speak. Each speaker is granted five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes, and that will indicate also that you have 60 seconds for any summarization. At the ringing of that second bell, that is your notice to quickly have your seat. When addressing the council, we ask that there be no personal address to any individual council members. That all statements, inquiries, comments be made to myself who serves as chair, and any particular council member who wishes to respond will have that opportunity. To maintain decorum, and this is important particularly in large meetings, to maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. I know some of you are very passionate. I see the signs already, some from my district. And so we just ask that we, this is a business meeting, we're gonna take time to hear each and every one that's here, but that you would respect and abide by these particular rules. Those are our rules, and again, thank you for your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of August 27th. Shall move?
Second.
Probably move to second in the discussion. Which, as always, if not all in favor, I oppose minutes of August.
Communication, the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope everybody's doing well this evening. I imagine that over the weekend that you've been paying attention to Hurricane Dorian and what has happened in the Bahamas. You know, I'm not sure that you can prepare for 200 mile an hour winds, and the devastation we see is absolutely heartbreaking, so I know they would appreciate our thoughts and prayers, but because it probably has crossed your mind, what are we doing in preparation for hurricane season? Director Barber will take just a moment, and these are the ongoing plans that we have to make sure that we are prepared to the best of our ability for a hurricane should it approach us.
Thank you, Mayor. The continuity of operations plan for the City of Mobile involves pre-storm preparing, during the storm, how we are going to perform during that storm, and then post-storm recovery. But to ensure the continuity of operations of the city's government is to make sure that we can continue to function as a city government for emergency caremen, for payroll, and all the essential functions that government provides to first responders as well as public works that will take the blunt of the recovery effort. That process has been ongoing and continuous. Do have plans in place, the Joe Snowden, Doug Cooper are the two main spearheads that are actually writing the plan for the entire city. And so as we reach the peak of hurricane season, do understand that there is quite a bit of preparation, a lot of contingency planning. For example, if this facility itself became inoperable, where do we need to assemble all of our community leaders in order to prepare for post-storm briefings? And so the operational plans for public works, the first responders as far as police and fire, to handle the storm itself as well as post-storm recovery, and then the continuity of operations of city government.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask Chief Seeley to please come forward with Tony McCarron to present him the firefighter of the month award.
Thank you for your time. I'd like to recognize Tony McCarron as our August firefighter of the month. There's a lot that he brings to the table for us. The letter was written, and I'll summarize this, from a district chief, that Tony works at the airport station, and we, with the buildup of Airbus, we had to move some assets from there to Brooklyn, even a map. So in doing that, Tony spent some off and volunteered a lot of his information and trained up some of those other folks so we could be well-trained in both places. So that's where it came from. But the other part of it I want to recognize is Tony is we've designated as our recruiter, and I can't think of a better fit for that if you know Tony, and he knows what our vision is. Our vision is to have athletic firefighters that are smart and can resolve problems at any time. That's what we have to do, and that represent Mobile. And done a great job of that. And as a subsequent reaction to the actions that we've been able to take, we've hired the most diverse classes that we've ever seen in Mobile Fire Department in the last couple of years, and that is attributed to Tony and his efforts. Tony will stop anybody on the street. He's been known to stop people cutting grass in their yard and asking if they want to come be a fireman. So I love that. But the thing about Tony is his passion for the job, and he loves the job, he loves the city, and you know he's a part of it. So on behalf of the Mobile Fire Department, I want to recognize Tony McCarron as our August firefighter of the month.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that he has been a great inspiration, especially in District Three. Tony wouldn't mind talking to anybody, as Chiefs has said, and I know many times that he gave out his cell phone number and say, hey, you know, call me, you know, I will help you get a job with the fire department, you know, and you could really see his passion as he go through, especially some of our community meetings and our district meetings, talking about the fire department, getting on board with the fire department, and trying to recruit for the fire department. And if we have more Tonys, I mean, this world would be a great place. Thank you so much for your hard work.
I will say this, I'm sorry, on Father's Day of this year, I called Tony to wish him a Father's Day, and he was at the trainer center, helping people train for the CPAC. In addition to that, he spent all day, the rest of the day, coaching them how to do an interview. Some of these young men and women have never been in an interview in their life, and he coached and counseled them into how to conduct an interview and be professional. Whether we hired him or not, he'd teach life skills.
Yeah. The other thing is, the test that is done here in Mobile as opposed to having to go up to Birmingham, because oftentimes you don't pass it the first round, but knowing that it's in town, you can try it again, especially if you're so determined. And that's a really great resource for us.
And Tony spends a lot of time down there, having them, allowing them to practice the CPAC test.
That's great. That's great.
Very thankful.
Chief, I think it's worthy of you mentioning the diversity in this class, especially from a female perspective.
Yeah, we've hired our four females in the transfer. Now, we haven't hired four females in the last 10 years. So that's, they've done a great job, and there's a lot more on the list. Very diverse class, so that's what we're excited about. But they're great people, and we were really excited about what we're.
And the point about the females, it has everything to do with them being able to pass the CPAC part of the test, and they just have not been able to do that, but because of the coaching and training that Tony has dedicated his time to, this last class, we have four female firefighters that are in this class, which I think is a huge step in the direction that we want to go in.
It is. Also want to update you on our deployment, if I could take just a second. Our urban search and rescue team, I'm a task force one, I don't know how much you know about it, we are the only designated type one task force in the state of Alabama. And what that task force is, we are the sponsoring agency, and it's not just Mobile firefighters, it's an 80-person team, a type one team is an 80-person team. Probably half of that is Mobile firefighters, and the rest are from surrounding fire departments, and then we have doctors, nurses, structural engineers, dog handlers, you name it, we have a lot, and we're self-contained team, a rescue team. So we've been asked to deploy to Florida to help with the potential devastation there. So our team is currently in Jacksonville, Florida, right outside of Jacksonville, Florida, and it's quite an undertaking to get that team out, and they did a great job of mobilizing and getting out. All of the funds, even the backfilling of our people, will be reimbursed by the federal government. So before, number one thing that happens, before we will mobilize them, we make sure that the threat is not on us. We are not, no longer in a threat. Even if we have another storm develop and come toward us, we'll bring that team back. So and in addition to that, we leave enough resources here that our community stays protected. So we didn't send everything out the door. We still have enough people to take care of the city, I can assure you of that. So be very proud, but if you look at geographically where the other type one teams are, College Station, Texas, Memphis, and Tampa, that's the closest type one team. You have one in Mobile, Alabama. I think y'all be very proud of that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson.
I would just say that Tony attends all of my community meetings. He's at all of my community meetings. Recruiting, he is there recruiting. Tony recruits people who can put out the fire. He's not worried about how they look. If you can put out the fire, that's what he wants on the fire department. If you are not in shape or not to put out the fire, we're out. Since 1702, we have never had a firefighter class that was 50% minority. Never. Because it's natural to recruit from within your own firefighters, go get their sons and make firefighters out of them. That's what has happened in the past. Tony broke that mode. And that last class was historic because he was recruiting. Who can put out that fire?
Congratulations, Tony. Well deserved.
Mr. Davis.
Chief, I'd just like to, I think, I appreciate your words about the response team. It's so important that we be in a position to help out those who from time to time are going to need that kind of assistance, because when the worm turns, as it surely will, we're going to want assistance from them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And for those audience who think you've heard the last name McCarron, that is his age daddy, okay? And AJ's doing fine. Okay. On a more serious note, I know that everybody here heard the news of the shooting that was at Ladd Stadium, the press conference that was held Saturday morning. Press conference followed a meeting between Mr. Threadgill, Superintendent of the School System, Chief Batiste, Director Barber, myself, and others to assess what had happened, trying to make sure that it never happens again. In that press conference, I think that you heard, you heard expressed by everybody there, including Councilor Manzi, that we are determined that it will never happen again. And so you say, how in the world do you do that? And I would tell you that over the weekend, Mr. Threadgill has worked diligently on a new set of protocols or procedures that will cover all of the stadiums. We have nine stadiums where our high schools play and where the Mobile County Public School Systems play. Two are owned by the city, Ladd Stadium and Tremere Park. The rest are owned by the Mobile County Public School System. Between the manning of off-duty police officers and Mobile County Public School personnel, everybody that will be coming into those venues will be subject to this new set of procedures. Would prefer to let Mr. Threadgill tell you what all those are, because it's, he is the one that has developed them to make sure that those venues are safe, that the venues are safe. He's done it in collaboration with the police department, but I feel like because of the work that he has done, that he should have the right to roll it out, because it does cover more venues for the school system than it does for the city-owned facilities. It may be an inconvenience for those that want to go to the games, but we're sorry. Matter of fact, I'm not sorry about that. That's just the way it's going to be, because we cannot allow somebody to come into a stadium with a handgun and create the happening that they did this past weekend. I think that you will see unprecedented cooperation between the Mobile County Police Department and the school system. I would also say that a couple of those venues, the Sheriff's Department already is working with the school system to protect the Mayor Montgomery Stadium and the Theodore Stadium. But all of these plans will be enhanced to assure the safety of everybody that's attending those meetings, attending those football games. We do ask that you please recognize that it is not just a police challenge here, it's a community challenge. And there are things that are known by students and by other individuals, or people that do want to create harm in our community. And it's only when we have that information can we respond and react to it. So we would ask that you please help us find and identify the people that you know are going to do something that they shouldn't be doing so that we can make sure that you as the citizens are safe. I'd also just tell you this, that when it comes to the guests coming in for out of town, if they're going to be playing in our stadiums, they will be alerted ahead of time what the protocols will be. And one of the things that we talked about Saturday will be that we are adopting what's commonly known as the college game protocols, like no umbrellas, no open beverages, clear purses, no backpacks, and clothing of a certain sort, you'll be screened. But anyway, I can assure you that the venues where we'll be playing football on Friday nights will be as safe as any place that you can be. So I hope that you will continue to support our teams because they need our support. So thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of the mayor's remarks, I am chairman of the Public Safety Committee. We will be holding our committee meeting today at 1:00, the Public Safety Committee, and the Director of Public Safety and the chief going to furnish us information pertaining to crime, what they're doing. We're going to be updated on that, and especially on violent crimes. I have made a request, and I'm glad you're here, because I want you to hear this, I've made a request through the mayor's office and through the Public Safety Division, for them to take a look at all violent crime criminals. At five years may be too much, but at least two years. Look at all of the shooters, to find out what they all have in common. Create a prototype that you can pass on to us, that we can share with you. Not that we're going to take this information and go and arrest anybody, but you can look in your own home, in your own family, to see if there's someone that fits this protocol so we can provide some help to stop these shooters. Let me tell you this, if we can't find the cause, we can't find the solution. When Typhoid was killing us, killing our neighborhoods, they didn't know what, they found out it was a mosquito, we exterminated the mosquito and got rid of it. You don't know, if you can't get down to the cause of it, we're going to be fighting this monster generations to come. So if they can furnish some information to help us kind of figure out what's driving this, then the whole community can join us in trying to bring this foolishness to an end. So as soon as I get that information, every citizen in District One will hear from me. And you provide that funds, we already have people on staff who can address it. If it's that they all, they all were unemployed, we're going to have, we're going to find you a job. We're going to get you over to the shipyard. We're putting you to work. That won't be no excuse. If you said I don't have an education, we send you to Bishop State so you can get an education. Otherwise, we're going to attack this problem when we find out what it is. So you'll be from me.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Vice President, we have some special guests here today with us, and I'd like to invite them down.
Yes, ma'am. I believe these are no strangers to a certain member of this council.
Whereas 80 years ago this week, a momentous occasion occurred in the small village of Nimp, Alabama, which has impacted the lives of generations of Mobilians and many, many others across our state, and...
Whereas this occasion was the birth of our colleague Frederick Doug Richardson Jr., the fifth of 12 children born to his proud parents Frederick Senior and Helen Richardson, who with grit, determination, and hard work, went from being born in abject poverty to becoming one of the most senior government officials in our city. And whereas after completing high school, he came here to Mobile, working first as a housekeeper at Mobile Infirmary Medical Center before passing the postal exam, and after starting as a substitute letter carrier, moved up in the ranks at the USS Postal Service, where he worked for nearly three decades. And...
Whereas while he worked, his thirst for knowledge and understanding drove him to continue his studies at Carver State Vocational College, Bishop State Community College, and then the University of South Alabama, where he earned a BA degree in political science and history, and obtained a master's degree in history, and...
Whereas this same thirst drove him to share his knowledge with others as a historian, playwright, lecturer, and prolific writer, author, authoring several books, including The Genesis and Exodus of Now, which document social, political change in Mobile, and inspired him to use this knowledge in his work to better the community, which started during the 1960s and 70s in the fight against injustice and exclusion, and...
Whereas this commitment to our community led to him being appointed to the Mobile City Council in February of 1997 to fill the vacant District One council seat left by Councilmember Vivian Davis Figures, where he has consistently won reelection with either no opposition or overwhelming support, and...
Whereas he will forever be known as a true theater-forrest district and his unrelenting commitment to the citizens of District One, which can best be summarized by some of his own mottos, including "You ring, I spring," always for the people, and fighting blight house by house, street by street, beat by beat, and...
Whereas even when he was the lone voice crying in the wilderness, he taught us all the important lessons that we will never forget, including, and y'all can, you know, along with me here, because I'm sure you'll recognize it, if you always do what you always do, what you always did, you'll always get what you always got. And you ain't got yourself nothing. And of course, that there's only one race, the human race, and...
And whereas, in his time on the council, he has worked tirelessly for the entire city, which is well illustrated by his need to wear two watches at all times to ensure that he is both in touch with Mobile and whatever international destination he finds himself in, sharing the story of Mobile, as well as his role creating one of the largest New Year Eve's events in the southeast, the incredible Moon Pie Drop, and...
Whereas while he has worked with many mayors, council members, and city staff, they could not, they could never be matched in numbers by his huge family and members of the Nimp community and District One community who regularly join us for inaugurations, meetings, and even council meetings. For these and many more reasons, we hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 4th, as Frederick D. Richardson Jr. Day in the City of Mobile, and encourage everyone to stop and wish him a happy birthday. We're going to ask if his family would join us up here for a picture and ask them...
Want your family up here with you?
Yeah, come on. Yes. Yes.
Come on, Lisa.
Oh, yeah.
Hey there. Good to see you. Good occasion. We all gathered up? We need to side down this way, just keep red circle in the middle. Way more people over on the left. There we go, that's better. Yeah. All right. One, two, three. Okay. Down one.
You got the flag?
We forgot that one. We forgot that. That should have been in there.
Sorry, hold on, one second. Okay. There it is. Perfect. Thank y'all so much. All right. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I have a word to say.
Yes, sir. No.
This is breathtaking. I had no idea they pulled this over on me. So I hadn't noticed my family, so I asked a doc here, I said, well, who is that up there? He said, "It's just your family." I had not even noticed that they were here. And I would like to thank, remember my family, the council...
Very good. This gentleman had a heavy word to say.
Yes, sir.
No. This is breathtaking, I had no idea they pulled this over on me. So I hadn't noticed my family, so asked, um, Doc here, I said, "Well, who is that up there?" He said, "It's just your family." I had not even noticed that they were here, and, um, I would like to thank members of my family, um, the council and the mayor for staging this event. Tomorrow is my birthday, and at six o'clock, we will be on an airplane going to Canada on my birthday, economic development, we're gonna try and bring some business back to the city of Mobile. Let me just say this, uh, do y'all know why I was born in Nimp? We all were born where our mothers, where our mothers were at the time of delivery. We couldn't, we had no choice. When it was time for me to come here, wherever my mother was, that's where, that's where my mother, my mother was in Nimp. That's why I was born in Nimp. My point is, we, we had, we don't have anything to do with where we were born, but we have something to do with it after we get here. It's not so much where you're from, it's what have you done after you, once you got to that birthplace, what did you do from there on? You can't hold me responsible for where I was born, but you can hold me responsible for whatever I've done since I've been born. Let me, let me tell you this, that God has placed in all of us the ability to rise above any present circumstances. My dad left eight of us in the house with our mother unemployed on the farm. If you don't stop, you'll get to the top. If it is to be, it is up to me. I can wind it, moan, we didn't have, no. If, if you wanna be successful, you got to go and get it. It was twelve of us, two died at all, ten finished high school, seven went to college, my brother and me was mayor of North Randall, Ohio, straight out of Nimp, had a mayor and a city council in the same house. If it is to be, it is up to me. If you wanna get to the top, don't stop.
Ms. Gregory?
While we are talking about Mr. Richardson's success, I do want to point out a gentleman who was with us today, who I think we could also look toward, who having been a part of Richardson's success over the years, and that's Al Stokes.
That's right.
Al, stand up.
All right. He was at Nimp's last week.
All right. All right, we're glad to see Stokes here. He's the district representative for...
Senator Jones.
Doug Jones.
And of course, longtime, longtime chief of staff under Mayor Dow.
That's right.
And Sam Jones, and one of my former bosses.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to say this last thing, because people are concerned about, what is Fred doing, eighty years old on the council? I think y'all deserve an answer. All of the people that saying that, none of those people are falling so I could vote early and run early. When I got here, I couldn't, I couldn't drink water in City Hall, I couldn't use the bathroom in City Hall. I started late, and I'm gonna end late. Just saying.
Yes, sir, sir. All right, again, uh, happy, happy birthday, appreciate you. Yes, sir. Madam City Clerk?
Adoption of agenda?
Some move?
Second.
No, we wanna, we wanna, I'd like to amend the agenda to move the presentations of petitions and other communications to the council up ahead of the public hearings.
And, and Resolution 46-811.
Oh, yeah. Second.
Probably moved in second, in the discussion. You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution 46-811, most suspension rules.
Most suspension rules for many considerations, Resolution 46-811.
Second. Probably moved in second in the discussion. I'm not all, I'm sorry, Mr. Richardson.
Uh, like I said, we have Mr. Floretta Fortune's family here, I would like for you all to come to the podium, please. Last, last week, they were here, we didn't have this resolution prepared, uh, we have it today, uh, we named the walking trail at Fickers Park in honor of this Floretta Fortune. Uh, we built a grand interway into the park, uh, and so now we going to honorary name Clement Street after her. What, what I'm going to do, because we have a long agenda today, I have the entire resolution that we're gonna, we're gonna vote on today, I want you all to have it. So Dee, can you come, I want you to pass this to them. I want you all to have the entire resolution, pass this to them. Okay, is, is anything you all want to say?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, my name is Yolanda Fortune, and this is Irma Gray, and, uh, we just want to thank Mr. Richardson and the council for, uh, what they have done, done in honor of my mother, Miss Fortune. She was a dedicated worker for the city of Mobile, seven years was volunteer, and fifty-three were full-time work. So I know she's smiling, looking down on us, and we want to thank you all for everything that you have done for her.
Thank you so much for coming, um, Miss Fortune is worthy, she worked for the Parks and Recreation Department for fifty-three years, she was a role model, she helped put these young kids on the right road, and we are grateful for all of her work, and that's why we, we're doing all of this. Thank you all for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Resolution 46-811, give Clement, Clement Street the honorary designation of Floretta Fortune Street.
Some move?
Second.
Probably moved in second in the discussion. You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Appeals, we have requests for wave of noise ordinance on September 20th and 21st on Palister Place West.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in, moved in, in the discussion. You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Matt Hoffman?
He's coming.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
I come to speak before you today regarding...
If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name is Matt Hoffman.
Yes, sir.
I reside at fourteen fifty-one Cedar Crescent in Mobile, Alabama.
Thank you.
I've been in the towing industry for seventeen years. I currently am employed with Southport Towing. I wanted to address a twenty-year-old ordinance that failed to keep up with the industry standards. In 2015, the Mobile Police Department recognized this, and instead of amending an ordinance through the city council, the Mobile Police Department resorted to a self-help implementation of price scheduling for allowing charges for rotation and city impound records. This memo is dated from December the 21st of 2015, and I quote, "In accordance Chapter sixty-three, the Mobile City Code listed below allow charges for rotation and impound record services. My concern are the charges that we are suspended for and investigated for, the same charges approved and allowed by the Mobile Police Department for the last five years. Some of those charges are clearly stated in the suspension letter that we received. We have requested copies from the Mobile Police Department through certified mail and through Ms. Wanda Ramon, so that we may investigate these issues. The only thing that we've been able to locate was a WPMI photocopy of a Joe Hudson invoices that is heavily redacted, uh, which leaves little defense. Our fear is that the investigation is gonna be delayed in order to seek yet a third suspension, revolting our being on rotation list, and eventually suspending our license to do business in the city of Mobile at all. The Mobile Police Department would have you believe that this is an issue of five companies. The truth is, is that this is an industry problem, created by a lack of enforcement, old ordinance, and conflicting information. The evidence of this will be presented to you shortly by my wife, who was an investigator, fraud investigator, for over twenty years of experience. Thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate your time.
If I could comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um, thanks for being here, appreciate your information. Um, I hope you're aware of the Public Services Committee meeting next week?
Yes, ma'am, aye.
And, um, I, I can't speak to concerns that you have dealing with your, um, with dealing with our police department or, or legal issues, but, um, that will be an opportunity for you to review the current ordinance, which we, we did start, this council did start, and, um, a wonderful opportunity to make recommendations, we'll be there to listen to people in the industry and also to our, our police personnel that deal with the industry.
It's, that is the day that if we are to be suspended for a third time and revoked, it will happen on that day, so I wanted an opportunity before then.
Well, the meeting's still gonna take place and...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Teresa Hoffman?
My name is Teresa Boggs Hoffman, I live at fourteen fifty-one Cedar Crescent Drive in Mobile. My husband told you I was an insurance fraud investigator for over twenty years. As the towing controversy continued, I decided to do some checking myself. I found numerous violations of the ordinance by other companies in the city. I provided copies of those violations in the folders that I gave you this morning, and I detailed the violation and attached them to every ordinance. I emailed Officer Christopher Grimes with the first violation that I found, I got no response from him. On August the nineteenth, I entered the Mobile Police Headquarters to report an invoice with a violation of the ordinance by Pitts and Sons Towing. I was directed to Sergeant Ray Robertson. Downtown, at the Mobile Police Department, I met with Sergeant Ray Robertson. I was told that the ticket was not a violation, he badly misquoted the ordinance to me and got angry that I refused to accept his answer. He left the room and returned a few minutes later. Sergeant Robertson told me that the investigation was closed. We were joined a short time later by Officer Christopher Grimes. He brought in copies of my emails that I had sent to city officials. They began to berate me with the emails, asking me over and over again who I was and why I was sending emails to Officer Grimes and other city officials. They were loud and increasingly aggressive against me. Their final effort to intimidate me was when Officer Grimes lunged across the table at me, screaming in my face, it frightened me, I was afraid he was going to hit or have me. Officer Grimes quickly left as I started to shake and cry. I asked to speak with someone to report their behavior before leaving the police department. I included that information in your folder as well, along with a sample recording of my experience at the Mobile Police Department. The Mobile Police Department has set a zero tolerance policy to violations of the, of the orders by towing companies. They set the precedent of immediate thirty-day suspensions and investigations into the business practices of violating companies. That is not what happened on August the nineteenth. They had the evidence of the violation for two weeks. The Mobile Police Department is unwilling to accept violations of any other towing companies. I'm registering an official complaint with the mayor, with the city council, and with the Director of Public Safety. I want an investigation, not only into the tow, other towing violations, but also into the way I was treated by the Financial Crimes Unit of the Mobile City Police Department. There's a lot of information in the folder, and I appreciate your time in reading and reviewing all of the information that I have provided to you. If I have a minute left, I would also like to say that no female should ever be in fear for their safety inside a Mobile Police Department at the hands of a Mobile Police Officer, and, and no citizen should be abused for trying to report a crime or violation. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Uh, Mr. Vice President?
Uh, Mr. Small?
Ms. Hoffman, did you ever report this to Internal Affairs? Did you make, did you file a report with Internal Affairs at the Mobile Police Department of your incident with the police officers?
I certainly did, I provided a copy of it inside there, I certainly did.
With Internal Affairs?
It took them a week to call me back. Lieutenant Reer called me back, he's with the Financial Crimes Unit, and I've included a recording of our conversation on that CD that I gave you. He questioned me about my personal information, he wanted to know where I was employed, he wanted to know who my social media contacts were, he asked me questions that were none of his business, he made me feel like I was being investigated, not the officers that had committed the offense against me, that I was being investigated. He wouldn't allow my husband to even sit in the room while he questioned me, he made him sit out in the hallway.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Public Safety Director?
Yeah, let me, um, I guess there's three parts of the two testimonies that we heard today. One of them is that the record ordinance woefully is inadequate. Um, I'm absolutely in agreement with you, I think it's inadequate, I think it's cumbersome, and I think it's outdated, and certainly that's what began this, was to revise that particular ordinance so that we could bring it up to date, bring in the true market values, and really reflect the services rendered by the different companies that are towing vehicles for the city of Mobile. The second part is, I do agree with Ms. Hoffman, nobody should ever walk into a Mobile Police Department facility and feel threatened by any Mobile Police Officers, there's an agreement there, and she has taken the proper steps and filed a complaint with Internal Affairs, I do not believe it's been completed, and so we wait to see what happened with that complaint as far as professional conduct of the officers that she spoke to. Uh, the third is the violations of ordinance that are under criminal investigation, her being a fraud investigator, it's not a clerical error, it's not a misunderstanding of fees, it is an intent of the individual to defraud either individuals or insurance companies, so completely different standard on the criminal side of violations rather than administrative side, but in whole, I'm actually in agreement with the Hoffman's.
Can I, so can I say something to that?
No, no, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I, I have in my hand, a document here, says Pitts and Sons Towing Company, and it shows that they charged forty-five dollars for winching service, and I want to ask the Director of Public Safety, is this a legitimate charge?
There is no, in my recollection, there is no provision for winching charges in the ordinance itself, a provision for how much time they, they can be compensated for after the first hour, so if it requires winching a car out of a ditch, that's part of the towing, is my understanding. So if it requires winching a car out of a ditch, that's all of the towing, is my understanding.
Well, it seems to me, Chief, what the other, what the other towing companies were charged for, charged with, was for charging citizens a fee for what was not mentioned in the ordinance. They got them fault. It was charging the citizens a fee for something that is not in the ordinance. If Pitts is charging a fee for something that's not in the ordinance, they, he ought to go down the same road the rest of them went down. We ought not to be picking and choosing, saying maybe he went out in the ditch and had pray. No. If this is not in the ordinance, did you find, did you, have you found, um, the police department a copy of this?
Absolutely. That was the invoice that I took into the police department and presented to Sergeant Robertson of the Financial Fair, uh, Financial.
How long has that been?
Uh, August the nineteenth.
Chief, do you, are you familiar with this?
I am familiar with that. She did take an invoice down there from Pitts and Sons, and there has been at least an audit done of Pitts and Sons. Where they stand with the investigations on all companies, I do not know. I do know there's constant internal, within the industry, complaints on each other that are going on, and so we're trying to vet through that as expeditiously as we can, as well as external complaints from people that think they have been victimized.
Okay. Hey, from what I understand, there were, there were people in the towing industry that ratted on other towing companies, and then they had to come, and they came and charged these towing companies. So now we got one against Pitts, and they've already alleged that the city of Mobile is afraid to do anything with Pitts. That is already out there. We can't sit here and have a violator and not do anything about it. That's all I'm saying about that. I don't think it's fair. I think if they violate it, they need to go the same route of everybody else. Treat all of them the same. I know about mistreatment. I was raised up with that. I don't favor it, I don't bite it. Don't mistreat nobody. Treat them all the same.
Can I also say?
No, no, ma'am. I'm so sorry. You have five minutes.
There are other companies of violations that are included.
I totally appreciate that, and if I, if it weren't my power, I'd let you talk all afternoon, but we got a long meeting. I understand your issue.
I could spend an hour up here.
Yes, ma'am. I believe it. I believe it. And you've given us some very, uh, helpful information here, and I assure you that I'm gonna review all of it, uh, as we forward with this process.
If you have any questions, feel free to contact me. You have my cellphone number, my email address, my home address. Contact me.
Yes, ma'am. See the address.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank both of you.
Carrie Coats.
I believe our real coach is here. I don't see it.
Okay. Um, and John Lawler has signed up for, um, the public hearing forty-one eight-two-three. Yes, yes.
Is that, um?
That's the one.
Mr. Lawler?
Yeah.
That's the one. I'm, I'm gonna be offering that we table this.
Yeah.
So that I can attempt to get all parties again.
Yes.
Uh, back at the table and hopefully come up with a path forward. You're certainly welcome to speak, but we're not gonna do anything with it today.
No. I don't wanna speak today. I wanna speak with you and.
That'll work.
Later. See if we can work something out.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Okay. Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to receive public input concerning the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget for the city of Mobile. Wesley Young.
Ma'am, sir, the clerk?
Yes.
How many persons have signed up to speak?
Three.
All right.
Okay.
Let me first say good morning.
Yes, sir.
My name is Wesley Young. I reside at thirty fifty-eight Jane Street, Mobile, Alabama. I'm a former, former employee, retired city employee of twenty-seven years. On last week, we had a speaker that addressed the council concerning retirees' raises for next year, and I appreciate the comment that Councilman Williams made. It was so refreshing to hear someone say that I am a retired, as he referenced to Mr. Richardson, and we were gonna do something for the retirees next year. That's inspiration for our retired, because we have to understand since two thousand and three, we haven't had any raise at all. We've had insurance increase three different times in the last four years, and then after that, we had a transition from Blue Cross Blue Shield, where we obtained the age of sixty-five, and that increase, we lost our vision and our dental. And when you get sixty-five years old, yes, you may not need dental, but you definitely need vision, 'cause most of us have diabetes of some type, either diabetes one or two. And she goes, and what we're doing, we're taking a hit. Our income is increasing, and all of our costs are increasing. So it's time now, since we have, we have a robust economy, that's what I heard, that we have a robust economy, next year would be an ideal time to get to this passion and get it done. And I believe this council, because I've seen you work in the last few weeks, in the last few months, to make things happen for all the citizens of Mobile, especially as we're to employees and retirees. I expect the same from you all next year. The retirees are public service. We are organized now, and we're not gonna sit back anymore and let things happen, and while our benefits decrease and our cost of living increase. So we expect the council to do your job. Please help these retirees, because we need the help now, more than ever. These retirees are the people that kept this city going years ago, when we didn't have the type of equipment that we have now to work with. We work with these. We picked up trash on Wednesday with these. What you see those knuckleboots pick up now? We did it with our hands, and we was committed and we were dedicated employees, and we are part of Mobile. If we're gonna create one Mobile, the retirees should be in part of that creation, and I'm talking about, about all city employees, each and every one of us. And I don't want anyone here today in this government to take my words out of criticism, and if one does, I expect you to take it as constructive criticism, 'cause all of us need criticism from one time or another, each and every one of us. Thank you all, and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna make sure it's real clear that what I'm hoping for is from the, uh, from the retirees, that they'll, uh, they'll have a very detailed proposal of what they would like to have, that they make attempts to contact the administration and discuss it within a reasonable amount of time, you determine that, uh, then come to Fred and I, and we'll, uh, we'll help you in, in getting an answer. Not promising a yes just yet, uh, but we'll promise your, uh, our assistance in, in relating and discussing with the administration what, what can be done. Thank you.
Ronald Hunt.
Hello, I'm Ronald Hunt. I reside at five North Fulton Street. I'm glad it's not a real contentious budget year. The good thing is our revenues are growing, our sales tax are growing, and from what I heard last week from Mr. West, the sales tax are doing better than they projected last year. What I did wanna come up here and speak briefly is what I noticed in overlooking the budget is that the budgeted reserves are increasing by three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars at a time when we paid down our debt by a hundred million dollars. And if we're succeeding our budgeted expectations last year, adding another three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, I guess gets us closer to the goal of two months of reserves, but I think in order to get that one month of reserves, we've kinda done it on the backs of some people that I think are important. I'm not really speaking as a representative of anyone other than as a public citizen, someone that cares about our city, but if I were one of you councilmen up there, and I dreamed that I could be, and life didn't allow that to happen, I think instead of putting three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in reserves, this, this I would do. And it's kinda difficult, 'cause everything that y'all budget's important. The performance contracts, I look over that, there's very little that I don't think is important. A few things in the last few years, I think, that kinda got pushed to side, that could use a little money to come back with that three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And if I were the councilman up there, I think I would give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Wave Transit that lost quite a lot of funding, 'cause that's affected a lot of service routes and a lot of people that are disabled, unemployed, or don't have cars. Their transit, transportation for the city has been affected, and they're reducing some of the stops as we speak. I think it would be good to give about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money back to the Wave Transit, and I'm a legendary progeny of the Mobile Botanical Gardens, and they're gonna be speaking here later, and I'm not gonna try to steal Robin's thunder. I'm gonna let her speak for her gardens, but if I were one of you, I think I would give seventy-five thousand dollars to the Mobile Botanical Gardens of the hundred and fifty thousand they needed, and that leaves about fifty, fifty-one thousand dollars for other things in the city that have kind of reached, maybe not been total priorities over the last couple of years. And I think children, our after-school programs, our summer, summer programs, the boys and girls, uh, the Boys and Girls Clubs, our McKinney Place, our homeless shelter, our Senior Citizen Center, like Villa and the Connie Hudson Senior Citizen Center, and Oakley could all use some money out of that fifty thousand dollars, and I think I would distribute ten thousand dollars to each of those areas if I were you. Just a request as a public citizen, and I guess one thing I have realized over the last five years, getting involved in this, you have a difficult job, and I thank you for taking on it, being the wonderful public servant you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Victor Knight.
Morning.
I'm Victor Knight. I work for the management group at Ladd People's Stadium. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, we thought it was important to come down here today and speak about the tragic incident that happened Friday. First, first of offer condolences to the victims and their families of the unfortunate incident, and also publicly recognize and thank the Mobile Police Department, other first responders for the incredible response that took place Friday that prevented what could have been a deadly incident. Those are the true heroes. Those people responded in a way that I, I just can't describe it. To see it in action firsthand is, is something that everybody in this community can be truly proud of. Moving forward, you know, immediately after the incident, we started discussions with Chief Batiste about what can be done, not only at Ladd Stadium, but also other facilities in our area. Those discussions continued throughout the weekend. Mayor Stimson alluded to some of those discussions that are taking place with Superintendent Threadgill, and in fact, as we speak, there is a meeting going on at Ladd Stadium with Chief Batiste, Superintendent Threadgill, and other law enforcement personnel about what can be done, not only at Ladd, but other facilities moving forward. As you know, we're in the middle of football season, and this issue needs to be addressed immediately to ensure the public and communicate to the public what those changes may, may be, but most importantly, moving forward, that our facilities will be safe. Um, you know, down the road, we, you know, in talking about the budget, you know, we need to make sure that we continue to work with, look forward to working with the city council, the mayor, and the mayor's staff to, to make sure that our facility is safe, not only in what infrastructure or improvement needs, need, need to be met, but what safety protocols may come up as a result of these new procedures. There may be additional funding needed for that, and we look forward to working with you and the mayor and his staff to make sure that that is done. But, but ultimately, this is, this is not a Ladd Stadium problem, but, but we're addressing it at Ladd Stadium specifically. That's my job. It's unfortunate that it happened there. This is, this is also a societal problem, like the mayor alluded to, and we've all gotta come together and address what we have to do to ensure the safety of people at all public events, not just high school football games, other events at the stadium, other events in our area, and, and we've gotta step it up, and we've gotta do a better job of identifying incidents and problems, and we're talking about that today and other members of our staff there, and obviously, I've gotta leave here, leave here and there immediately, but we're gonna get it done, we're gonna make changes, and we're gonna make sure that people feel safe when they come to the facility, and we look forward to working with all of you to do that. If you've got any questions about what happened Friday.
Question, but, um, thank you for your time and for all that you do and for the board's dedication and service, uh, 'cause that's all voluntary, so we, we appreciate their, their hard work. Um, the other day at our first finance committee, it was noted that, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand was given to, um, Ladd to do structural upgrades. Part of that was also a path that, um, people in the community wanted, and, um, I got the impression from our finance director, chief of staff, that, um, there could be a budget amendment that this council could look forward to, so that the money, since it went into a contract, but was not dispersed, so I, I guess I'll ask the mayor, um, whether that's something we can look forward to transpiring, because our, our fiscal year is almost finished.
Yes, I think, uh, last week, we talked about this, and such a resolution is being prepared.
Great. Forward to that, um, because we know about your engineering report that talked about structural things, and, um, from what I can tell, your camera system, which, which I believe was a creature of the board, putting in that extra, all those extra cameras for security, really was helpful to our police in this issue. So again, um, I know this board is extremely capable. There are some concerns that your board might not be able to let go contracts. Um, again, that's all to be worked out, but I'll look forward to having that money put into a capital account so that improvements can be made on lots of levels there.
We can work through anything if we work, work together, and that's part of it, and you, you alluded to, you know, infrastructure and improvements, some of those are related to safety. What comes out of what we're talking about today could also relate to safety, whether that's additional personnel, there may be more funding there, other ways to secure the facility, and more, more cameras, enhanced cameras, you, you alluded to that, that was not an inexpensive addition, but you're right, it captured the entire incident and was valuable in apprehending, uh, the, the individual that was arrested, but we, we have, that will continue to pop up as we go, that, that, along those lines, but like I said, and you alluded to it, working together, we can get it done. Look forward to doing that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have the president of the Ladd Stadium Board with us, Ms. Ann Davis. Ann, would you, Ann, why don't you stand up? This is Ms. Ann Davis, president of the Ladd Stadium Board. They have done an outstanding job. Can we give her a hand? Thank you, Ann.
The fine representative from District Six.
No doubt about it. I support, I support District Six, too.
Yes, ma'am. Reggie Hill.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, to Mayor Stimson and the administration, uh, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, one thousand and seven, Sinister Street. Please bear with me as I try to, uh, I was trying to transfer these notes from the finance committee meeting into my questions today. Since this is our opportunity to speak, I hope it reflects what I, um, gathered at the meeting, and if there is any corrections, I hope that someone can enlighten me on those things. Uh, the mayor said we can position ourselves to anticipate change rather than only react to it. What I took from that is the idea of being proactive, and we see a lot of things now moving within the city of Mobile, and at this time of the year, we have to make sure that we're allocating the resources in place that are gonna improve the quality of life for the citizens of Mobile, not just shifting numbers and make things look as if something is great or in place, place what it could potentially do, but actually doing things that are gonna enhance our opportunity to have this being the safest, most friendly business city in the country. And I'm very optimistic that we have the potential to do that, but again, it's where we're allocating our resources. So I'm gonna ask a few questions. So I'm going to ask a few questions before I go into the actual petition that I have or where I see the resources should be allocated, and hopefully someone can be able to answer these for me. I've never heard of anything about neighborhood rentals, which was allocated now $49,000. Can anyone give me any kind of insight on what that is?
I didn't understand the question.
Say that again.
They're about, there's a new line item for neighborhood car rentals, and it's saying that it's for $49,000. Now, if it's something that's dealing with then regular day-to-day operations within the city, and it just hasn't been specified before, that's understandable. I'm just trying to understand where did it come from and what are they actually doing with the car rentals?
Mr. Valerman, we'll have to get that information to you at the next finance committee.
Yes, that'll be fine. They're going to get that.
Okay. All right, the next, and I'll just run through them then. If they can, if they can answer them, I would love to hear that from now. But hopefully, we can get something right before, because there's been plenty of times that requests have been made, and we're still waiting for some of those answers. There's a parking management increase from $250,000 to $923,000 for parking? So we can get some type of explanation on that as well.
I think that venue in, not out.
Ms. Rich, let him answer all his questions, please. And that way, the appropriate official can respond, and we get extra, he doesn't have but the five minutes. His five minutes is going to be up soon. So I want him to get through his questions. I want him to ask every question he want to ask.
And I would like to reclaim my time on that as well.
No, sir, no reclaiming.
With the, I would like to commend both the administration and the council for continuously implementing the CIP funding. We've seen over this four-year period where we've had $84 million, which has been a very great improvement for our city. But one thing that I've always said in the three years that I've been coming down here is I want to see that dispersed equitably, not just equally, not just evenly across the board. And it's because we have more concerns in certain districts. We've seen how we can disperse it equally and the benefits that it's done. But I would like for us to just even examine, looking at if we disperse those resources based on the needs in districts who are hurting a little bit more than other areas. And then when we get everyone to a level playing field, then we can go back to that equal distribution. Because again, people are not going to come into the city of Mobile and say, oh, I had a great time in this district, oh, I had a horrible time in that district. They're going to talk about their experience in the city of Mobile. So we need to make sure that we open that up. There was a $34,000 increase for expectations on police fines. Now, I don't know if we just wanted to give out more tickets. I've already been through that experience myself, with something that was even unlawful. And I'm just hoping that we're not looking at putting resources into place just to put our citizens in harm's way. So because the buzzer is just ringing, I'm going to, I'm going to submit these questions, and hopefully we can have the rest of them answered. But I want to present to you what I'm expecting. I love that Mr. Hunt was back down here today and was able to speak. It was good to see him back in the chambers, and those are matters that we really need to address. But we have a $6 million increase for public safety. We don't have to speak about this incident that just happened. If our mayor is going to sit out the message, we're going to be proactive, then we're not going to improve those type of situations by putting more money into the muscle power. We're going to have to put it into programs and investments that can actually change the character and mindset of those people moving into that. So I want to see us be able to move some of that $6 million, and I'll give you the specific numbers when I submit these questions, to additional performance contracts, as well as at least $10,000 more dollars for discretionary spending for each of the council members. Because where we can't meet it at the performance contract level, we can at least invest in our districts directly. I'll submit the official work, but I just believe that we can allocate these resources in a lot better places to actually fix the sector concerns that we're seeing in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. And we look forward to getting your questions. You could forward those over to the attention of Mr. West and just copy us, please. It'd be quite helpful.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition on the structures at 461 Driver Street.
I think there's people that didn't sign in.
Yeah, there are some folks who were here that didn't necessarily sign in because we do have a public hearing for the budget. And I thought we were going to do all of the public hearing at the same time.
We can, yeah. Come one, come all. If you could just clearly state for the record both your name and your address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. I am Robin Kerchak, executive director of Mobile Botanical Gardens, 5151 Museum Drive, 36678. Mobile Botanical Gardens began in 1974, a city-owned asset then as it is now. There have been good years and bad years, but through the decades, the gardens have grown, tripling in size to what it is today. Thousands of specimens have been planted, greenhouses and wells and irrigation systems added, a classroom building, walkways, fountains, benches, lighting, parking lots, drainage systems, and fencing. And along with all of those improvements, the gardens have grown in quality as well. Mobile Botanical Gardens is recognized as having the largest and most significant collection of Satsuki azaleas and Aromi hybrids in the United States. Mobile Botanical Gardens has the largest urban fire-managed longleaf forest in the United States. In 2014, Mobile Botanical Gardens Camellia collection was recognized as an international garden of excellence. It is now one of only eight in the United States. We stand alongside quality public gardens such as DeSano Gardens in Huntington Botanic in Los Angeles, Magnolia Plantation in Charleston, Massey Lane in Georgia, and Norfolk Botanical in Virginia. International recognition has been achieved for your botanical garden. And now, Mobile Botanical Gardens has one of the country's finest horticulturists on staff, a talented young nurseryman, a plantsman, who has worked at Magnolia Plantation and Longview, and now he has chosen to relocate to Mobile Botanical Gardens to continue his career. Our membership and our visitor numbers have increased. Our programming is diverse and popular. Most notably, our botanical arts program, which was started four years ago under the direction of Derek Norman, became the genesis of the Coastal Alabama Botanical Artist Circle. In 2020, in October of 2020, Mobile and Mobile Botanical Gardens will host the National Convention of the American Society of Botanical Artists, drawing roughly 300 attendees from all over the world to Mobile for a full week. The other cities that have hosted this conference include Washington, D.C., St. Louis, San Francisco, Pittsburgh, Miami, Denver, Chicago, Boston, and Pasadena. And now you have Mobile in that collection. Without question, Mobile Botanical Gardens is a success. The achievements and the exceptional beauty of grounds are the result of hard work. Many dedicated citizens, show your signs, who have given their time and treasure, and by the hard work of a very small, dedicated staff, hello, and others. Our gardens are magnificent, programming has grown, visitor numbers have increased, memberships have increased. But clearly, what has not increased over the years is operating support from our owner. Each year, without sustainable support, MBG has raised all the funds for operations except for $5,000 annually from the city of Mobile and $4,000 from the county. It costs us $500,000 annually to operate the gardens, and we actually run at a budget lower than what we did five years ago, even lower than eight years ago. We are efficient and careful with our funds, but all it takes is a rained-out plant sale or a few lightning strikes or torrential rains to damage us and set us back. Add in a year in which we assumed six more acres of city-owned property to our management, and we are now on the brink. We must have help. We must have sustainable support. We are here to ask this city council and mayor to amend the 2019-20 budget such that Mobile Botanical Gardens, a city-owned asset...
I am so sorry.
...receive support.
Yes, ma'am. And we received all of your information and the very tasty honey and all of the emails that we've gotten from citizens across the city of Mobile. Will you hold your green signs up again? I want to see where District 2 is. Let's see, let me see. Okay. She's claiming, there we go, District 2 there on the front. All right. And I see my former colleague, Dr. Judy Stout, is in the audience as well. I know she has a green thumb. Glad to see you out today. But, but I believe your message is falling on very positive ears, and I hope that a solution can be worked out very soon, and I appreciate coming down today. Mr. Gregor, is there anything you'd like to say?
I'm just happy to see everybody here today. Thank you for coming. And I was wondering, how many in the group are master gardeners? Yeah, that's one of yours. And, and most of you all, if not all, volunteer at the gardens. I'm assuming that pretty much everybody here volunteers at the gardens. Robin may be a staff of one these days, but she certainly has a great group of volunteers who are here. And of course, Andrew Saunders up top, been involved in the gardens forever and a day. Andrew, good to see you. And I hate to say "and a day," but you know, you've been there for a long time. So thank you to everybody for coming. And most definitely, we have very receptive here on the council, and I think the mayor and his administration are just as concerned, and we are looking at a path forward. We'll start some meetings today talking about that, something that will be beneficial for both the gardens and the city. So we'll work toward that. And, you know, you certainly have my support. Of course, another $150,000 is in the budget this year for the gardens out of my CIP, so we'll continue to give all of those infrastructure improvements. So we need the staff to be able to make it all happen. Right.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Richardson?
I just want best to know that it is the fact that Ms. Ann Davis lives in District 6. Robin Kerchak lives in District 1. I want to get, I want to get the record straight. Headed a botanical garden, she's in my district. I support Robin Kerchak.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Barbara Lenahan, and I currently reside at 10873 Weeks Bay Road in Foley, but that's recent. And I'm the chairperson of the Mobile Public Library Board. So I was in District 6 for years and years and years.
And I heard you're coming back to downtown.
And I am coming back in October. I'll be in downtown Mobile.
Tell us, if we were in the chair, we would say, amen.
Well, thank you. I just, we have a couple of questions at the library about our, the 2019 team and the budget for next year. We appreciate our level of funding. We, Scott Kenny does a great job with level funding. We've had level funding for years, and, and we work with that, and we appreciate that because I know how tight money is. But we also, we have a question about the raises that the city employees get. Because we, our staff, our city employees, so whenever you all give a raise to the city employees, we give a raise to our city employees, I mean, to our library employees. So currently, for the 2019 year, we're $50,000 short with the people are getting. And then with the level funding, those raises were not funded for 2020, and that's $150,000 short. So that cuts into our level-funded budget greatly. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention and ask you if you could check into that for us and...
Again, Mr. West or either Mr. Woods are employees of the Mobile Public Library, employees of the city of Mobile?
No, sir.
Okay, so I just want, because that, I just want clarification on that front. Anything you'd want to offer, Mr. Woods?
Can I defer to my director? Because he can explain this better than I can.
Come on down, Mr. Curry. Were you finished with your presentation? Ma'am President?
I had to ask my question.
Okay.
And Scott Kenny, 5317 Isabel Way South, Mobile, Alabama. And that, that is kind of true. The library is in a gray area of being city employees and not being city employees. The library was founded as a municipal library back in 1901, and every administration, prior to this administration, has always provided the funding for staff raises when city raises were given to city employees. They funded the library employees raises as well.
Well, I guess my question to you is, are the employees of the public library city employees?
Right now, we share the same EIN as city employees, and our W2s say city of Mobile.
Signs to the checks.
City of Mobile.
Right.
So let me explain something.
That is by contract with the city.
That, that's exactly it. And that, that problem is being rectified come January 1 of this year. People held off on years. As Scott mentioned, that gray area was created by people not paying attention to detail for a number of years. And then, of course, nobody wanted to do the actual separation. But we have, we've been in talks internally about making sure that we separate. And of course, what happens is by contract, by contract, because they are not city employees, we've handled it out of convenience, but that will no longer continue after January 1 of 2021.
Can I ask a question? If the, if the budget does not take care of the raise, does that interfere with either number of employees and/or hours of operation? Because we already know that, that it's not as many hours as in the past, it's dearly missed in this community.
Yes. It, it would affect services. As a board, we have not discussed that. First, what we know is the resolution that was asked for fiscal year 19 employee raises, the library was included in that resolution.
On the list, right?
On the list, correct. And it passed through the city council, given through the administration. We made a decision as library board to go ahead and give employee raises based off of that information, which we did. And now, in understanding that while they gave it fiscal year 19, it's a cost of living adjustment, not a one-time performance bonus, that it would be honored in the 2020 budget. We did do our diligence, speaking with folks, we included in our budget. It was sent to the appropriate people, and we did submit our budget. Now granted, things happen in the budget world, but in good faith, we did make that adjustment in our budget and provided the raises. We've always done that. Like I said, every administration going back to 1901 has always covered our employee raises.
And there are services out in the county, but who provides the financial obligation for those services?
The city, Saraland provides the funding for the city of Saraland employees by contract, and for the Sims Ranch Library in the county, that is provided by the county.
Okay. And then you get state grants and...
Then we get state aid money and then revenue that we generate.
Right. You, you really informed us last year when you were cut so drastically.
Correct. We have not had an operational budget increase since 2008 when the Ben May Main Library reopened.
Okay.
And at that time, we were almost an $11 million budget.
Ms. Rich?
Yeah, I mean... I have a question.
Ms. Greg?
And Mr. Woods, I just want to follow up. I was trying to write notes as everyone was speaking, but you mentioned it's going to be rectified in January. What exactly are you...
So that is correct. So for a number of years, for not wanting to pull the Band-Aid off, you've had city employees who are in one category, and then library employees who are not city employees, they don't report. They're not appointed by the city council, they're not appointed by the mayor. They're not appointed by the city council, they're not appointed by the mayor, and by definition, they're not city employees. But through contract, what we've done, they remain on payroll, and we've had the same EIN number, which is, which is an issue. So, that separation is going to likely take place come January 1. It's a good time to do it for payroll purposes, for W2 purposes, for things of that sort. Right now, our department, our payroll department issues the W2s, all those things. So, it would seem as if they're city employees, but they are not, and you don't want to have that confusion going forward. So, beginning of January 1, 2020, is a really good time to make that change, and we're in the process of doing it.
So, then, the library, I guess, board would be then responsible for hiring the employees, paying the employees, payroll, everything at that point?
Yes, ma'am. So, right now, the library, not necessarily the board, but their executive director is responsible for hiring. We don't hire and fire library employees. Just make that abundantly clear. So, if you're talking about payroll, then the city would no longer deal with that aspect, and we would have to have separate EIN numbers-
In January.
In January.
So, would we expect that this board will have to hire a payroll service, and so there'd be duplication and a cost to them?
They would probably, unless they wanted to do it internally, they would have to do that. And we haven't had those conversations at all, but the answer is yes.
Because that's going to add the volume of cost to their operations.
That is correct. They would have to be able to do that sustainably, and there are a number of different reasons why you want to separate. You don't want people who are not city employees under the city umbrella for a number of different reasons.
I just want to make certain I understand something. Have you all already given the raise?
Yes.
And you gave the raise based off of what?
Based off of the resolutions.
No, I mean, I understand for me, if you were included on the list for 19-
No, we haven't given the raise for 2020 yet.
Right.
No.
Okay, that's what I mean.
We're asking to restore funding for that into the proposed budget. We're saying if that budget was passed, past is right now, essentially, we are not flat-funded. We are short $150,000 for the 2020 budget. Right now, we're short $50,000 for the 2019 budget.
Okay, so I guess my question is, say, for instance, the funding stays exactly where it is. That would present you and your board with two options, I would imagine. Either find the money to give the raise or to make the cuts that you proposed.
Correct.
And not give a raise.
Correct.
So, three options.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to make certain that I was hearing all that you were saying clearly.
But also, just to be clear, if there was money in the budget amended or otherwise, if there was enough money in the budget as proposed, then you would get raises out of that budget?
For 2020 or for 19?
Well, I guess both.
Okay. For 19, yes, we did have $50,000 in fiscal year 19 to where we could give raises, but we also knew that, according to the resolution, that was going to be funded through the city because we were on the resolution list, that it would be funded.
All right. But if there is no resolution list, if just within the budget that is proposed, you would have to give a raise, if there was to be a raise, out of that specific budget?
Out of 2020, yes. We would have to give a raise out of the budget that's proposed right now.
Or not give a raise.
Or not, yeah.
In other words, you'd have to decrease their current salaries.
Yes.
Because you gave it, and there are no raises planned citywide, to my knowledge, at least in this current budget. You're just saying to level fund, you have to go back the $50,000 because it was a half-year raise. You absorbed it, but it's difficult if you only have so much reserve.
Right.
But you certainly don't have the reserve for the $100,000 moving forward.
I'm sorry.
Do I have that right?
What you did is, in fiscal year 19, for half a year, you passed a cost of living adjustment of two and a half. That carries over to every fiscal year from now on.
Yes, right.
We were on that resolution list for our portion of that. We have not received funding from the city. It may be an oversight, I don't know, we haven't received last month's check-
They don't see-
-the city for our disbursement. But as it goes forward, we're asking mainly is, in the fiscal year 2020 budget, because of that raise that's already been awarded to city personnel, the city, since 1901, has followed suit to provide funding by corporation papers. They are required to, are encouraged to give funding to the library at the same rate they are city employees. And as it stands right now, that $150,000 is short.
Yes, I get that. I get that.
And we're just asking if we can find $150,000, please store the funding for our staff salary raises. We like, Vice President Manzi said, we would either not have to give a raise, which means our library employees would be, morale would go totally down because we wouldn't be at the same level as city employees. Everyone assumes because we're the Mobile Public Library that we are city employees. Like I said, this is not uncommon in every state. I've run libraries in other states. A governing board in every state across this country is set forth for their libraries, with the exception of states that actually get their mill directly by tax, and their library boards are left.
Let me ask you a question. So, your point is, you gave the, you gave the raise last year-
Mm-hmm.
-and didn't get the additional money to go with it.
Right. I would literally have to take it back.
Right. And so, in order to keep the raise, in order to keep their salaries where they are now for next year, you need an additional $150,000.
Correct.
And I guess my assumption would be that you're going to need that from here on out in order to keep the salaries-
Yes, it was a cost of living adjustment.
Right.
It was not a one-time bonus.
It was not a one-time bonus.
Mm-hmm.
But I think you all are kind of get where this administration is going relative to city employees and library employees-
I do understand.
-and raises from here on out. Kind of understand what the situation you all are in now.
Right. And we're a little different than some other agencies of that way, that we do have some statutory rights as a public library. We were created by state statute to be a municipal library as a Class II city, and we have state statutes that mirrors with this city very well.
Do you have a state statute that says that we are required to fund raises for public libraries at the same rate as city employees? Is there a state statute that exists that says that?
That is not there in that explicit writing.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you all.
You would never find a state statute in these states written that way.
I imagine you wouldn't. Yes, sir.
But no, but all we are really asking, this was just information for you all and a request, if possible. We know revenues are up, and we would love to be able to keep our employees at that rate because otherwise, we're at the point where we do have to cut services.
Well, thank you. You all, we have, we really overendows, and it's in deference to the great work that the library does, including my appointee, Ms. Brenda Joyce Jackson. Want to recognize her. I hope to see her as president of this library at some point. She's been on the board now my whole tenure, and I want to see her move up at some point. She's capable, competent, and qualified.
She's our treasure, and she's chair of the nominating committee this year, so-
Well, nominate yourself, Ms. Jackson. You've got my support.
Thank you very much.
If they're those who need to leave, we understand. We'll give you an opportunity. Anyone else that would like to speak during this particular public hearings relative to the budget? All right, well, then, the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to fix the cost of demolition of structures at 461 Driver Street, 1710 Prince Street, 1014 Dolphin Street, 800 Hockam Avenue, 1069 Kochel Street, 176 Third Avenue.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak relative to any of the addresses called by our city clerk? Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the vacation of portions of North Carolina Street and South Franklin Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during this particular public hearing? Mr. Attorney Lannan?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Councilmembers Clay Lannan with Jones Walker Law Firm, 11 North Water Street, Suite 1200 in Mobile, Alabama, 36602. I don't really have any comments. I'm here to answer any questions you have, and I've spoken with several of you prior to the meeting about there's some urgency with this request, and I understand it's customary when these petitions for vacation of a right-of-way come up to initially come up to put them over for a week. But the reasoning behind the petition or asking for these right-of-ways to be vacated in this instance is that his property where he currently, his business currently stores equipment was so portioned, it was condemned by Aldot for the Mobile River Bridge, and Aldot has been repeatedly writing him in less. They've already condemned it, paid for it, they've gotten a deed to the property, so Aldot owns it, and they're demanding that he remove his equipment off the property they condemned. He has moved some of it, and is leasing, paying money to lease land across the street to store equipment on, and he has purchased this property, and his plans are to move his equipment over to this property, which is very nearby. But he's incurring all these expenses, and he's got to clear some brush and stuff out of the way in order, once these right-of-ways are vacated, in order to move his equipment over there. And so, our request be that if it, if there's not a real legitimate reason to put it over for a week, we go ahead and consider the, you guys consider the resolution today if that's possible.
Well, colleagues, in light of what I've heard from Mr. Lannan both now and prior to this meeting, if we could agree to move forward with it, I don't have any objection to it at all.
No objection.
Okay, well, it sounds positive. Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Are the public hearings closed?
Public hearing to consider the vacation, a vacation right-of-way fee as a condition of the vacation of North Carolina Street, South Franklin.
Is anyone here that would like to speak in this particular public hearing? Public hearing is closed.
Resolutions held over. 01783, 784, 785, 786, 787, 788, 789, 790, 791 are authorizing maintenance agreement with Aldot U.S. 90 at Washington Avenue, Royal Street, Joakim Street, Jackson Street, Clavon Street, Lawrence Street, Cedar Street, Scott Street, and Broad Street. 21792 authorized contract with Flongo Bart Ross Consulting for fleet performance consulting services. 21793 authorized contract with roof assessment for Gulf Coast Explorium Roofing. 21794 authorized contract with roof assessment management for Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center Roof Recovering Construction Roofing Observation and Inspection. 21795 authorized contract with H&amp;H Electric Company for Lab People Stadium North Endzone Transformer Replacement. 37796 approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Stevie Brown doing business as Elian Limousine Service. 21801 contract with Browning Brothers Flooring Company for Central Fire Station Domitour Wood Floor Refinishing.
So, move.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is passed.
Consent resolutions being introduced. 08803 through 6813.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of resolution 8803 through 60813.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
08803 approve requisitions over $7,500 for the week of August 26. 09804 transfer monies in District Two discretionary account to Parks and Recreation Department for annual Africa Town Community Day on September 1st. 40805, 806, 807, 808, 809, and 810 are fixing the cost of demolition of aforementioned structures. 58812 declare weeds noxious, weed link group 1598, and 6813 determine the expenditure to events. Mobile serves a public purpose and approve payment.
So, move.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time. 21814 through 21818.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of resolution 21814 through 21818.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion?
815 comes out, huh?
Oh, 815, let's take that one out. Let's take that one out, Mr.
With exception-
21814 authorized contract with Apex Construction for Medal of Honor Park Gymnastics Center Site Drainage. 21816 authorized contract with FCS Facility Maintenance for Hackmire Park Underbush Clearing. 21817 authorized contract with Espaillier LLC for Spanish Plaza Hardscape. 21818 authorized contract with Water Air Surveying for Langham Park Survey.
So, move. Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Williams?
I would just like to offer to the administration that if we can look out something where, so, maybe we add something to the agenda, a link, I don't know exactly, but I know that some of these things have been discussed over and over and over, especially the ones that are in big groups, but I certainly entertain some additional exception when it comes to group projects to $100,000. But I'd like to enter that discussion first so we standardize it before we start making that exception. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolutions being introduced for the first time. 21819 through 47821.
By council rules, these resolutions will lay off for more weeks.
Well, we would consider 47820, 821, the vacation Mr. Lannan just brought us.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration, which one you want now?
47820 and 47821.
For immediate consideration of 47820 and 47821, and the other resolution will lay off for a week.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
47820 assent to the vacation of portions of North Carolina Street and South Franklin Street. 47821 establish the fair market value of the public right-of-way located at North Carolina Street and South Franklin Street as $47,566.90.
So, move.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is passed.
Call for public hearings. 41822 call for public hearing to rezone property located at 2754 Dolphin Street, north side of Dolphin Street, 55 feet west of Mobile Street from B1 to B2 scheduled October 1st.
Did you read both of them, Mr. Richardson?
Call for public hearing. I'm going to do one at a time.
Okay.
Need a sec.
We probably move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is called.
41823 call for public hearing to rezone property located on the north side of Government Street, 140 feet east of South Anne Street from B1 and B2 to B2 scheduled October 1st.
Move to table.
Second.
Probably motion to second that we table. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item is tabled.
Announcements.
Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. Just to remind you to the citizens of District 3 that we would be holding our district meeting coming up on the 24th of this month. Letters will be going out in the mail soon. Remind all citizens that if you have anything that you want in particular to address, please contact me at cj-small@cityofmobile.org, or either reaching me at 251-208-7441. And we will be having a job fair at Revelation Baptist Church, 5 to 6 o'clock PM, and then at 6 o'clock PM, will our district meeting start. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
I thank you, Mr. Small. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're holding a Public Safety Committee meeting today in the council conference room starting We're holding a Public Safety Committee meeting today in the council conference room starting at 1 o'clock. Public is invited to come.
Mr. Daves?
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that we have a Finance Committee meeting a week from today at 2 o'clock PM, which again is an opportunity for members of the City Council to ask questions of the administration with respect to the proposed 2020 budget. That again will be at 2 o'clock in the council conference room. I would ask any council members who, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right, that Finance Committee meeting is at 3:30 in the council conference room. And I would ask my colleagues if they have any additional questions of the administration with respect to the budget, to go ahead and pose those questions as early as possible, and I'd ask the administration to respond to the questions that have been posed and will be posed quickly as possible, so that we can move expeditiously after the Finance Committee meeting next week to vote on the budget on September 17th in order to meet the statutorily required completion time for the budget. And I'm gonna finish up very, very briefly, and I know all my colleagues are gonna roll their eyes when I begin on this, but I just, I think it's important to remember that without, without in any way diminishing the legitimate concerns of the people we've heard from today or otherwise, the city has made over the last five years considerably, considerable improvements in its financial condition. A third of the long-term debt, a hundred million dollars, has been retired, we're spending forty million dollars a year on capital, when we were spending five million dollars a year on capital, and we're slowly eating away at the infrastructure issues that we have. And we've restored the strategic reserve. Having said all that, we still have, we still have a hundred million dollar deficit, unfunded liability, building, lease and firefighter pension plan, we still have two hundred million dollars in long-term debt, we still have two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty million dollars in deferred maintenance on our streets and our roads and our bills and our drainage system. So there, there are still fiscal challenges in front of the city. And the final thing I'd say on this respect is that even though we have reached the point where we have two months of strategic reserve in place, which is what the analysts expect us to have, the, the time to run surpluses and build your reserve is when times are good, as they are right now, because times are not always going to be as good as they are now. We will, we will have recessions in the future, and at the time we enter the next recession, our economic downturn, it's important that we have a fully robust reserve there to help us get through that period of time. So we need to be, we don't need to be spending the reserve at a time when we should be having a robust reserve. Not that anyone has suggested that, but I know it's sitting out there, a big fat ripe red apple, and everyone wanna make bites out of it, and I, and so I thought it was important to remind everybody of that. Thank you, Mr. Vice.
Thank you, Mr. Daves, former president of a bank, and you can tell. Uh, Mr. What up?
And you just hit it.
Okay.
The city is not in business to save money, the city is in the business of providing service. The bank is in the business of making money. City is in the business of providing service. If we get more, we ought to provide a greater level of service, not to go hide the money somewhere in some vault. See about the people.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. I just want to remind everybody of the Public Services Meeting, which will take place this week at 2 o'clock. It's planned for the auditorium to give people in the towing industry the opportunity to review the current ordinance and make recommendations for changes. We'll give them, depending on the number of people that come down to represent that industry, either five to three minutes. We do have to end that meeting in order to be at the Finance Committee meeting that begins at 3:30, so we will have some time constraint, if that means continuing that dialogue, but I also appreciate anyone from the administration, public safety, and all the, deal with the industry and help with that ordinance, our city council attorney, and of course, the attorney with the police department being present, mostly again to audit or to explain the reasoning for any changes and/or conditions within that ordinance. So I look forward to that meeting, again, at 2 o'clock in, in the Government Plaza next Tuesday, September 10th. Thank you.
Your meeting is at 2?
Yes.
Well, that may be enough. Ms. Gregory, then we'll go back to Mr. Williams.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I've mentioned a couple of times a planning and plan implementation effort that we have underway at Langen Park. We will be holding some meetings that where I'll need some people to volunteer to be on focus groups, as well as a broader group, that will be a steering committee, and I've started reaching out to a few people. We will send out some more information to let people know exactly what's available and what to expect if they would like to volunteer, so we look forward to that. Also, just want to let people know who drive back, back into the Old Shell Road a lot, the area that is close to I-65, you'll see big barrels set up on just about every culvert on both sides of the street, and then the reason is because we are doing work on drainage there with these culverts, they're cracked and need to be replaced. The vac trucks have already been out there and been able to get out most of the gunk that's in there, but we are waiting to come back and do some work on those culverts, so that's why you see those barrels, and that's why also you see some truck backup, so we just ask for you to please be patient, we, we will work finished, and it will be so much better once it's complete. The other thing I want to remind people about, if you are going to Maple Street Bibiscus, and a lot of people are, it's a new restaurant that has opened right next door to Laverta Park. There is limited parking there, it's enough for the restaurant itself, but they have been overwhelmed with business, so if you come and there is no parking on the side or in back, please park in the parking lot that is between the restaurant and the park it's set. It's a city parking lot, it's really meant for Laverta Park, but at breakfast and lunch, especially right now, there are very few people who were parked in that parking lot, so please, instead of parking on both sides of the street on Border Drive, it's very narrow anyway, please park in that parking lot. Residents who live on that street are having a hard time getting in and out of their neighborhood, so please be courteous and park if there is not room behind the restaurant or on the side there where parking is provided, please park in that parking lot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't make a, at least make a comment about Mr. Chapman. Charles was a personal friend of mine, reached out to me during my very first campaign. He was indeed the first president of the council in its current form of government, and did that for two terms, but before and for mayor. He didn't just stop, he kept on doing everything he could to improve this city and continued to work and operate a business, and has two children who contribute now with their own businesses. It is, it is through his rest that there will be no funeral or wake of any kind, but the family is considering at some time in the near future, some type of memorial gathering. What form it will take, I'm not sure, and I am been assured by his family that when they are prepared to talk about that, they will. But I will just tell you, there are a lot of work, a lot of words between me and him that, that helped me to work out some issues very early on, and he never missed an opportunity to invite me for martinis in his office to discuss the very important issues that face the development community, and so he, he really had never quit. And I also want to thank everybody that has, that has wished well for Luke, who is in his 12th day in training with the Marine Corps Boot Camp. If anybody knows where folks from here go, it's called Paris Island, it's in South Carolina, it is on the coastline, and this morning they loaded up rucks and rifles and all their belongings and boarded buses for a marine base in Georgia. So everyone is okay, but they have to evacuate ten thousand people from that base, Marines and recruits, really just an amazing operation that's going on there now, but again, the purpose of that was just to say thank you for everybody who's sent me notes and sent their thinking about Luke. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and we certainly will be keeping the Chapman family in our prayers, and also your son Luke, as he endeavors with that career, we're proud of him, and I know you're proud of him. I want to say to the administration that I have been inundated by the steppers, the lineages of my district, that me at Spring Hill Rec, at the Sullivan Center, two or three other, our community centers, they are instructors, have been informed that they have to have some three, three hundred dollar policy in order for them to teach this class for free, and the instructors have subsequently told them that if that's the case, then they are going to have to stop instructing, which I can totally understand. I will provide that information over to you all, but I assure them that as soon as Tuesday morning came, I would bring this up in this public setting, so that they know that that is important to me, and it's important to you all, and hopefully, an amicable resolution can be found.
So, thank you, Mr. Manzi, so I want to make sure, two things, if we're talking about the programmatic partnerships.
Yes, sir.
Which is a requirement for volunteers and people who pay, there is no payment amount for people who volunteer, we'll make sure to verify that information, but if you're talking about somebody who purely volunteers and they are not paying the instructor, and is purely voluntary, there, there is no, there's no payment amount.
Well, just forward all that they've sent to me, to you, and then hopefully you can let me know what you make of it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion?
Move to a charge.
In the motion, is there a second?
Executive session.
Mr. Williams?
We have an executive session announcement.
Oh.
Um, I, I sent a memo, there's, there's no problem with calling an executive session to discuss the criminal cases, but there needs to be a policeman to make the declaration, and it appears he's left the room.
So, he will be present, he will be present there, and he has already stated his intention, so let me go ahead and make the declaration on behalf of the city, and he will be present, which is what the statute requires, him to be there.
Well, I guess my question is, is the intention to convene the executive session right now, or to do it during the executive committee meeting?
We can do either, as long as the requisite amount of people will be there. If we'll have, if we have five people who are actually there, we have a, at the 1 o'clock, then we can do it there. I, I had no intent of making it here, I had intended to do it upstate.
Where are the votes that want to call?
Yeah, so it's, it's easy enough, if Mr. Barber is there, he, he can, the declaration, that's all that's required.
So we don't have to do it here.
I, I will not, I will not be there, but I sent the memo to all of you, I sent a copy to you, so there needs to be a motion to go into executive session to discuss criminal investigations. Second, Mr. Barber makes the declaration, you vote, and then the chairman announces whether you're gonna reconvene or not, it's, it's that procedure.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting.
And then reconvene.
And then reconvene in the executive session at 1 o'clock.
Yes.
Right, and just so it's clarity, there, there's the criminal investigation, but also pending litigation, dealing with a rather pertinent matter.
But we're gonna deal with both at the same time.
We're planning to deal with rather, deal with both, planning to deal with both.
We'll need two declarations, but we can deal with.
Two different topics.
Two different, two declarations, one session.
I, I didn't catch the litigation.
Litigation is, litigation is our normal protocol for settling cases.
Okay, I'm sure if it was something different, I get it, you're just gonna settle some cases.
That's it.
Okay.
So we've had discussion, this is on adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Yes, ma'am? Sure.